All the roles.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Yackabosi.
Here. I take a recommendation to approve the agenda as it is presented with any addendums that we received today. A motion in a second, please. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yackabosi.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis. Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Good news report is first on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you Board for giving me this opportunity to talk about a few things. I really couldn't highlight one thing, so I grabbed about four things that have been going on and just kind of touch on a few of those. Our first one I want to discuss, we have two students who are National Merit Scholars. And Brennan Kirsch has been named a commended student in 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. So he is done, he's not going to dance anymore. But basically what that is, he goes to score in the PSAT, he is in the top 50,000 of the country for his accomplishments. So, you know, where he's not moving on into scholarship territory at all, if you put that on your college resume, if you put that on any type of, you know, college application, that's definitely a door opener. So that's a big deal. Even a bigger deal is the second individual, Ethan Mulnar, he has been named a semifinalist. And what that tells us is he is right now in the top 16,000 of all students in the U.S. and he is still in the process. And after an essay, writing down extracurriculars, things he's doing, getting letters of recommendation, he will find out in February if he is a finalist. And if you are a finalist, obviously that opens even more doors and multiple scholarship potential there. So those two students, like I said, need to be recognized just because on a national level, I mean, they are tops in the nation.
Takes half the votes, right?
I wanted to make that same joke, but I thought it was fair.
That's the way it is for my agenda, right?
The second thing I'd like to share with is comments for a cure. In the last few years, we've called this pink week, but we went in a different direction this year. And the week of September 19th, Nikki Campbell, our new assistant principal, sold over 700 shirts and we gave over $1,000 to Relay for Life. And we were pretty passionate about honoring the kids that, you know, in our community are dealing with childhood cancer. Kelly Keegan, she lost her daughter to brain cancer two years ago, was a very big advocate. She spoke at our Midview football game two weeks ago and it got rained out, but she had a Alex's Lemonade Stand there and that made a lot of money. What that Alex's Lemonade Stand does, it brings attention and takes care of families, it gives money to who are dealing with childhood cancer. So she's pretty passionate about that. She gave a talk between the first and second quarter, wasn't a dry eye in the stands, but obviously being an advocate for awareness, funding, family care, things like that, that was a, it's a great new tradition. We're looking at next year already and thinking we're going to mix it up. Maybe autism, maybe epilepsy, maybe diabetes. What type of disease or disorder is affecting our students in this community? So again, huge success and it was the first year we kind of switched it up and we're definitely going to continue doing it because it was, it was pretty special. Third, we have esports coming. I don't know if you guys have started hearing about that. Actually, the cameraman here is going to, hopefully if you guys approve, will become our new esports advisor. And esports, if you're like me a few months ago, you didn't know a whole lot. Overwatch, Super Smash Brothers, Rocket League, League of Nation, there are these games these kids are playing. And I say games because I grew up, I mean, I played football, I played basketball, 50 pounds ago I played tennis. These kids now, your mom would always say, get out of the house and, you know, go run around. These kids are playing these games and colleges, Ohio State is giving scholarships, Ashland University locally here is giving scholarships. There's a university in Pennsylvania that is building a $5 million facility with the arena on the bottom and then the dorms up top. Like you would have athletic dorms, you now have gaming dorms above their arena. So this is real from a coding standpoint, from a computer science standpoint. Brian, I don't know if I'm doing it enough justice, do you want to jump in at all because Brian knows a whole lot more about esports than myself?
No, I think, I think you're hitting it on the head. Like I think the first time I read about it was about 10, 15 years ago when the Ivy League started it. And I think the coding, computer science aspect and now UC, University of Akron, the Ohio State University and it's becoming so big that they couldn't ignore it and, you know, funneling the kids into those types of programs at the college, I think it helps. And so just giving kids a lot more opportunities and, you know, this, this fall sports for this esports Ohio, the Fall League has about, I think, two dozen high schools in the area that are already signed up and they get the schedules going. And these guys were, these guys were made by educators, like for educators, so they're pretty, pretty well set up. But yeah, it's nice.
And it's definitely getting Nordson and Royal have both committed quite a bit of financial scholarship and funding for this, so it's definitely something they're behind. And we have a Mac lab down right across from Steel Moves Live. We don't use it that much, so we are probably looking at that being our new gamers arena. And yeah, we're excited. They will be competing in the Spring League by the time, so we're going to have a few parent meetings and we're looking to get this moving competitively come spring.
I just want to say that we have a student that graduated from Amherst, Japham, he's actually the teacher for an esports team at Missouri Baptist University in St. Louis. Just took a job there. So he's doing it for a living.
Yeah, there was something on ESPN last weekend and it was a seven-figure jackpot. I mean, these 16, 17-year-olds, they're, they're literally, literally winning millions of dollars. I mean, it is, it's real.
Yeah, it is.
It is. I was just used to them in the Tendo and Atari, but it's come a long way since then. But you guys are making more money than mom and dad sometimes. And last but not least, this is something we're going to get into now is mental health first aid. And this is something we're hoping because it's pretty catchy, Lady Gaga's Born This Way Foundation, so we have her name behind this. She is starting with 30 schools total?
Thirty, well, this is the second pilot this year and 35 schools across the nation were chosen and we were one of the 35 chosen to be part of the pilot for this year.
So we're, we're pretty excited about this. You know, the whole thing with Maslow's hierarchy, I mean, if you're not whole person, if you're, you don't feel safe, psychologically your needs aren't getting met, you know, what we do in these walls is, is going to be second to all those things. So, you know, Amherst Schools already, you know, we brought in full-time social worker, we've added another school counselor, we continue building partnerships with Mercy, Lakota Firelands. This is a way we feel like it's just another step in the right direction for helping kids. And where do we go from here? So next month in October, 10% of our staff is going to get trained, we're going to go to LCC. And we got a lot of advisors, a lot of coaches, this is 10% of our staff that I would see our students look up to and find a lot of leadership athletically, academically, extracurricularly. So we are going to train 10% of our staff next month. And then we're going to look by the end of this year to bring in about 150 students. We got to start somewhere and we're, Sarah can jump into, we're kind of building this as we're going, but we realize the only wrong way to do this is not to do it at all. So we're going to train about 150 students this year and then we would like to roll out eventually where the entire sophomore class next year and then eventually all of our students. It's a five-step curriculum.
Yes. And mental health first aid is not new, it's been around for about 20 years. If anyone wants to go get trained, the Lorain County Board, well, what used to be Lorain County Board of Mental Health offers trainings for anyone in the community that wants to get trained in mental health first aid. They also have a youth mental health first aid, which is what our folks, our advisors, our coaches, building leaders will be getting trained in next month because that is as an adult responding to, you know, what, what happens when you overhear these conversations or if a teenager or a student discloses to you that they're considering self-harm. Well, what teen mental health first aid is, is it's about training the students because we know that students are more likely to speak to their peers than they are to go to an adult. And so the more we can get the peers, you know, empowered to know the right things to say and the who to reach out to and the what to do next, the better off all of our kids will be. And this, it's not just about, a lot of this is about suicide awareness, it's with, it's Lady Gaga's pet project through the Born This Way Foundation, but it's also through the National Council of Behavioral Health, our backing up along with the Born This Way Foundation. And it's to teach our kids to know what to say and who to go to. And so then, as Joe had mentioned, this year we're looking at our student activity groups and our student leaders from those activity groups, but then in future years, looking at our 10th grade class because then they'll be the ones coming in as juniors and seniors to then work with the younger grades and even down into our junior high. So we really see this as being a very empowering program to get our hands on. So we're really excited about it.
Yeah, one, like, you know, one in five students, so it's a lot more than you think. It's kind of a stigma, it's, you know, this is troubled or whatever students. A 2016 graduate here, I lost one of my neighbors to suicide and Eagle Scout, I mean, top of his class and just all-American kid, you wouldn't have thought it and, I mean, but getting these kids to talk, you know, just recognizing, getting those conversations is, like I said, the only wrong way to do it is not address this at all. So we're pretty excited, we're building it as we go, we, we needed to write the grant literally in a day or two, so I mean...
We found out about it on a Wednesday afternoon and the grant was due, or the proposal was due Friday afternoon. And so we're doing this in partnership with Lorain County Community College with their early college high school program. And so it was Kim Haney, Pat McCaslin from Lorain County Community College bringing it to Kim Haney and you know what a dynamo Kim is, once she gets, you know, hey, this would be something great, she then ran it by me and so like all of these moving parts we were trying to pull together by, in 36 hours, it was, it was pretty great.
And we did it, so. All right, that's enough, that concludes my good news report.
Any questions? Public key, I don't believe anyone has signed up on the table, would I? Item seven would be the treasurer's report.
Good evening Board, this evening I have quite a number of items for your approval. 8A, 8B, excuse, 8B, A, B, and C are all repetitive items that you see approval minutes and approval of the prior month's financial reports. Item D, I have a few things to edit and one thing to add. All but one fund are increases and appropriations, okay? So the first one is 29109, which is the class of 2019. I explained in the update, we're setting this appropriation of the remaining cash at the end of June and that represents the class of 2019's gift to the school, which was landscaping to partake in the cost of landscaping inside the school. Fund 019-9001 is the alumni fund, the board approved that last spring and now we have a budget, we expect to have $2,000 cash at least and expect, expect to spend approximately $2,000. The next fund, 467, very interesting that we talked about Lady Gaga's foundation and the student wellness is such an important piece that the governor has set aside millions of dollars for school districts. This is the next fund, 467, we are setting the appropriation at $290,105. These are the funds from the governor that are earmarked for student wellness and success. We just received this in this afternoon's email indicating the appropriate uses of this restricted use fund. Again, this year is $290,000 and we're supposed to receive $400,000 or so in the next fiscal year. There is no mention beyond next year, what we may be receiving, it's only addressed in this by him at this point, but it's $700,000 that Amherst will be receiving to use for student wellness and success. The next fund is the permanent improvement fund, I'm sorry, we left off the fund, there would be 003-0000, we are increasing that permanent appro, or that appropriation to The 030 fund is the rec fund, we are increasing that to $67,500. We are increasing the 209143, or the student council fund, to $30,000. And then the next two are auxiliary, the 9218 is the auxiliary for the last two years, 18 and 19. And then the next fund, 4019220 is the fiscal 20 and 21 auxiliary funding code, we're increasing that appropriation to $155,233,000. The next is Title VI restoration, this was just allocated to us, we were not aware of this at the time we did permanent appropriations, but the VI restoration will be $3,855.36 this year. The next is another restoration grant for the early childhood special education, we're receiving $427.08 in that one. The Title 4A, the next one is Fund 599 and we are increasing that by just $300 or so. And the 018-0000 is a principals' fund control account, we're increasing that by $20,500. Fund 551, Title III, we are decreasing that one from $3,810.75, which was last year's allocation, to the $2,185.91 for this year. Just a side note, these monies don't come directly to us, nor are they spent directly by us, these come to us through the ESC, but we still have to recognize them as a revenue and we recognize this expenditure. And then one more that is not on the page at all is Fund 499-9219, we are increasing that from zero to $20,413.45 and that is a safety grant that we need to expend. So I apologize for the, that these weren't mentioned in the update I wrote to the board and I'm sorry for the confusion here. Item E, we are asking permission to do a fund transfer from the 29019 account to the 018-9001, 29019, we just talked about that above, that is the class of 2019, those remaining monies are going to be transferred to the principals' account. And then item F, with a very large...
I don't know if you saw that the numbers were different, that 29019 that you referenced in E, E has 9109 instead?
9109 is correct, not 919, I apologize for that, thank you for pointing that out. Item F is a very, very lengthy resolution and it is, we are taking action on behalf of the library and it is a resolution determining to proceed with submitting the issuance of library bonds. These library bonds are for construction and improvement. They are wishing to issue 500, excuse me, $5 million in improvement bonds for a .73 mil bond levy and that is 7.3 cents for every $100 valuation. Understand that Amherst Exempt Village School District facilitates this because it's a city library, so that falls under the taxing authority of the school district and they have no authority to levy or no taxing authority by themselves. So this is simply a resolution to proceed, the library has already taken action, a resolution to necessitate and a resolution to proceed and we facilitate this process and then we can submit to the board elections. Item G are donations and that concludes my section of agenda.
Okay, we're going to take a motion for item 8A. Any other second for that?
Sure. 8A, the motion is made by?
Yours? Yackabosi? Any discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yackabosi.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. We'll take a motion now for 8B through G.
Second.
So any discussion, questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yackabosi.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Excuse me. Moving right on, if I can get my voice to the audio. Administrative report, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel, and just a few items here I would like to work my way through. First of all, as the board is aware, we did have our full-scale safety drill earlier today in partnership with not just the Amherst Police and the Amherst Fire Department, but we had a host of local agencies that were involved in this drill. Of course, we had all 420 of our staff involved in some way, shape, or form, a number of local agencies, hospitals, UH, Mercy, Cleveland Clinic, Lorain County SWAT, just a number of different organizations and the drill went very, very well. And a lot of things that we did very, very well as a school district and then as with any drill, I identified some areas that we need to go back and review and update. For example, we were talking before the meeting, you know, one of the things we've learned is we don't have enough radios at the board office. I think our buildings are in pretty good shape, bus garage, but one of the things we identified, for example, Sarah was helping at the reunification site, which was Faith Baptist Church and we just realized early on this morning that we need some more radios in the board office. So again, that's one of the reasons why you do these drills, so that, you know, those areas can be addressed and, you know, we can get those things shored up. But we are just so fortunate here to have the partnership that we do with our local police and local fire, because specifically Dan McCruskey was the kind of the lead person in terms of planning and organizing, he's the one that kind of pulled it together and just a great, great partnership we have. And I think everyone that participated in the drill this morning would agree that it was time very well spent and, you know, obviously it's something that all of us, we'd rather not have to do, we'd rather not have to think about it, but obviously we owe it to our students and our community, you know, to, to be as prepared as we can be should something terrible happen. So again, just a quick update on that safety drill, last one was done in 2015, I would anticipate that we would look at another full-scale activity probably sometime within the next three or four years. And again, we have trainings on an ongoing basis, drills in each buildings, each building, tabletop exercises, which we just had one last week, preparing for this full-scale drill, so this is just an ongoing point of emphasis for us. The other item I wanted to mention, this is homecoming week, very exciting week, very busy week. We have the gallery success, if your schedule allows, please feel free to stop by the high school cafeteria, nine o'clock on Friday morning, always a great event. We have a parade, which I know the board has participated in the past and I think is planning on participating this year. And I'm not sure, I have to check the exact time, I want to say...
Four o'clock.
Yeah, line up is at four o'clock.
Are you going to break steps off that time?
Yes. Do you want to truck him in?
Are you going to get your truck? And is it the board office?
Yep.
Yes. Yep, line up on 4th Street there, very similar to last year.
Five o'clock, he's starting to move.
Do we still have the sign?
Yep.
So what?
It's hard to believe, it's that time of year already.
Are we giving candy away? If we are, Theresa cannot be in charge of it because she buys...
I think Valerie should be our candy lady this year.
All right, go ahead.
Valerie, you have to... Remember last year we always had sour stuff or...
Flavored, did I do that?
Flavored Tootsie Rolls was what we had.
Do you want more to throw out or you want the more expensive stuff? You want some more expensive stuff?
Okay.
I'm not going to comment, we'll just see, we'll just see what Val comes up with.
Good luck Val. Because they only want to spend a little bit of money.
I'll send myself a note or I'll be running to buy candy right?
And they, they don't want to spend much money either, so good luck.
Okay. We could just have the treasurer get it. I wouldn't step in that, I'm arguing. Okay.
So it is...
It is happening.
We're, we're planning to look forward with that. Of course, again, then Friday night as well and the dance after the game and hopefully the weather will cooperate because in fact Casey Wolf and I were just talking here this afternoon, Olmsted Falls is 4-0, we're 4-0 and of course homecoming and if we get, you know, some nice weather, we anticipate a very, very nice crowd. So looks to be a great week and certainly look forward to the, to the parade on Friday as well. A couple of other things, just real quick, building update, building project going very, very well. Valerie will then run at the last quarter meeting, Theresa was also there and we are scheduled, building is on track and we're looking at November to have the building complete. We have finalized our dedication date, which is Sunday, November the 17th at 2:00, we're going to start to work on invitations for that as well as the agenda for that. In addition, we also started promoting today via Facebook and Twitter, similar to what we did with Powers, or excuse me, similar to what we did with Shoup and Harris arranging for a couple of final walkthroughs, community walkthroughs. So one will be this Sunday, thought it would be kind of neat to tie it in with homecoming weekend. So this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, Powers will be open for any community member that wants to take a walk through the building. We've made arrangements to have magnets like we did with Shoup and Harris, Russ Marty's worked with Janet on those and so we'll have those available to pass out. And we will also have another community walkthrough available on Sunday, December the 1st. So again, a couple of opportunities, anybody that just wants to walk through the building as we prepare to close that building down here in just a few short months. And again, we'll promote those and advertise those via social media. Along with that, the building, our transition committee, Valerie's a part of that committee and we are scheduled to meet October the 16th and it's right around the corner. We start moving into that building on January 6th when the students, that'll be their first day in the new building. We've got some things to take care of between now and then, we've talked about, for example, the other day we had a good discussion about cleaning and what our cleaning staff needs to look like with the new Powers Elementary Building. Obviously a big building and so we're looking at staff and what shifting we need to do across the district with that, as well as aid schedules, monitors, lunch schedules, those kinds of things. So again, hoping to have that finalized here over the next couple of months and transition committee plays a big role with helping with those things. Other than the report card, which I know Mr. Mulnar is going to speak to in just a couple of minutes as a part of... couple of minutes as a part of his report, that completes my report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, on the dedication?
Yes.
I would assume that we would have, give Powers PTO an opportunity to, even if they were going to do, what, activate bake sale, whatever, something like that. I'm not sure if we, have we thought about doing something like that?
Yeah, we don't have all the details, but we obviously want to make it a special occasion from a lot of different perspectives. So we've actually been brainstorming different ideas for the dedication ceremony, what that looks like and what's involved with that. But that's a, that's a great idea. And they have Powers PTO, obviously, they have contributed significant dollars to this project to help with the port river surface, for example, for the playgrounds, you know, that would certainly be a nice, nice touch. So yeah, we're working on that. The other thing we're actually working on, we just started talking about the other day in the board office, is our retiree luncheon. That's always a hit every year. We invite all of our retired staff back for a luncheon and we thought it'd be kind of neat to do that. We don't have a date set yet, but we thought, nor is it in December, but we thought that might be a nice thing to do in the new building as well. So again, once we have, once we have that date set, we'll let everyone know and want to make that a special time, maybe have the orchestra involved in a nice luncheon and a tour of the building. So lots happening as we prepare for the opening of the building. And we'll do the very best we can to make it, make it a special event for everyone.
Any other questions for Steve? If not, it's reward.
Yeah, a few items to share tonight. I didn't realize Mr. Tyler was going to share most of them on his report, but that's okay. Did want to mention, of course, report card. We were very pleased with the report card. All of our grades that we received were the same or improved from last year. An achievement, we had 13 incares last year, this year we had 16, so that was an improvement as well. And of course, our most important aspect of the report card is the progress of the value add. So we received four As yet again in that area for all students in the district, lower 20% students, students with special needs, and also our gifted students. So we're very proud of the work that all of our students and teachers did for that report card, so very pleased with that. Yeah, I was going to talk about esports a little bit. I do want to thank Norton specifically, Joe mentioned Norton, but they donated a $10,000 grant toward, just $10,000 toward the esports program. And we're in discussion with them for possibly that being a yearly thing. I think they want to see how well esports plays out in the district and we're looking for hopefully a positive spring competition season coming up. And then Royal Business, he also mentioned, donated 1,500. That one is going to be reoccurring. They'd like to see if they put the money toward the specific internet access for the students and also I think a special router. So a lot of those are for the special technical things that they need specifically in esports, including for the computers. Royal is going to bring the, I guess, pieces and parts and actually work with students on actually putting the computers together before they start gaming. So I thought it was a really, really cool thing. And just fun fact, last year's Super Bowl was watched by about 98 million people worldwide. And League of Legends, this past year, their world competition was watched by about the same number, almost 100 million people. So it rivals the Super Bowl as far as viewership. So that's pretty cool. I think that's all I have, but again, Joe took, stole my thunder.
Questions for Mr. Mike?
Yes, I do. How many students do we have participating and how do they get into the group?
So in spring, we had an initial meeting. And Brian, can I ask you, how many parents and students kind of signed up to get the initial information?
There was about, maybe about 20, 20 parents and students at that meeting, but Amanda Sears sent out a Google form interest for the students. And I was in contact with some of them over the summer to find out when they were available. And we have, in the four games, at least for the esports Ohio league, we could field like three teams in each game, like each day, which would be more than we could possibly field. And so, and then there's some interest in other games for other leagues that are pay leagues, so we might not get into it. So there's quite a bit of interest and a lot of the players who are interested are actually already in pay-to-play participation sports already, like band and football and cross-country and things like that. So we envision a lot of kids who will be very interested in not only a spring, but possibly a fall one if it really takes off, so.
Interest has gone up since, since, since spring. Most students realize that it's going to happen. So excitement has gone up.
So if it's, if a student, this would be a follow-up question to what he just said. If a student only chooses to participate in this esports, they will pay the fee correct? Correct. Just wanted to make sure that there was not, because that'll be a question that will surface, I'm sure, from the public, is do those students have to pay the...
Pay to participate?
Pay to participate, okay. Any other questions, Valerie?
No, but I have a different question, a different subject. Do you have another question? Website, the new app. So I just realized that the new app does not have, if I'm not mistaken, any of the high school stuff on here.
So well, it does not have the high school sports on there. So any, like Financial Information Night, I believe is probably on the calendar there. The sports is not because the sports program is a separate website, separate entity.
Is there, so...
From, but from the app, the board section.
Yeah, so I was just going to ask you.
There's an athletics link that takes you right to the website.
So it's not on there, you're just, it's just a different way?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
I had asked the same question because I was bragging about it to a group and they were like, well, if there's no high school stuff, we don't want it.
And that's hard to tell also, that the junior high has the most on it by far. There's minimal NOR and there's minimal powers. So I think that just as we have always had concerns about updating the website from coaches to players that's a year behind, I haven't looked at it this school year yet. I think that we need to make sure that the app is being used by every school building, okay? The junior high should get gold stars because every time I've been on there, everything that I see going on is going on at the junior high.
So Powers, NOR, and junior high all put all their events, the reason we don't see many NOR in Powers is because there aren't many evening events, right? So but like I just put on today, the Monster, NOR PTO Monster Crusher's game. So anything that they do have is on the website and the app. The junior high as well because that's the calendar they use for everything. High school events like open house or parent conferences coming up, financial aid night, those are all on the app and website as well. One thing it's not are the sports because that is a separate entity and there's no collaboration between our website and that one. That is something we can look into to see if there might be some way to export the sports activities from the other website to import into ours possibly. But there's a link right there.
Well, my thing though too is that we also have to make sure that the high school people are using that because that's one of the things I'm hearing from businesses is that they're sponsoring that page and the teams aren't even putting anything on there. So we got to make sure that the teams are putting stuff on that.
And that's been a problem for three, four, five, seven years, that the information about what's going on, if you recall, I came back a couple of years ago and said, the tennis team was a year old. We'd already finished the girls tennis season and we hadn't even had the girls that was playing tennis up there that year. We had the previous year up there. And I think that we need to pay attention to that. And if we're, if we're touting the app, which we should be touting the app, I think that we need to make sure that the sports people from the high school engage this. And I don't know what that's going to take or how that's going to happen, but I think it's important because I look at the app more than I do on the website by far. And if I do that with not a kid in school, what do you think the parents that have a kid in school do?
High school's a bit more.
I will talk with my friends. Any other questions for Mike? Yes, Mike, I have a couple of questions.
You're in trouble.
When you look at the report card, Aon Lake, in one of the categories, and I meant to bring it and I didn't, but there's one of the categories that they have an NA and we have a score there. Can you expand upon why some of those schools have NA in one category and some have a number there? I'm sure that someone could pull it up and you can see exactly what I'm talking about from that perspective. And I was just, I found it interesting that those two schools, which both received As and we received to be, had this category of NA, but yet we had something going on in that category. And I wondered why that was or does it have any significance in the overall scoring?
Some, some parts of the report card, you might receive a not graded because there are certain qualifications for certain subgroups and things. So if they determine a subgroup is too small to be, yeah, representative of the population or a factor, then they might not grade. For example, in K3 literacy, I know, for example, if there are a certain percentage of kindergartners or if it's below a certain percentage and it's too small representation of the whole group, it might not be mathematically significant. So they, they, they don't want the grade to not reflect possibly what's happening, so they remove the grade, just report not graded.
But does that get a lot of...
Not that the report card, I think, accurately reflects what's happening in districts anyway, but they do remove that grade for some, we have received not graded for some grades in the past, so.
So we don't decide that they have?
The state decides that, yeah. And they often change, they haven't changed those thresholds and they, well, they raise and lower the bar sometimes, so. But I'm not here with their numbers and their, from their report card.
I was just curious because I thought, you know, it was two larger school districts that had, that not rated, or there were smaller school districts, whatever it was.
For example, sometimes if you're, if you're a diverse population, let's say you have a very small number of African-American students or multiracial students, they might not, because it's too small of a population, they might not rate it because it won't reflect.
I think Sarah has looked it up.
It's the K3...
K3 literacy.
Yeah, literacy, so it's the at-risk population.
So that, so probably, again, their kindergarten numbers are too small to reflect, and I guess the state's uncomfortable of reporting it.
Interesting.
It is, it is.
It is, it is.
You see this two school districts that have that going on, you know, that didn't have anything in eyes of, you know. How, how do we have that rating when, you know, they're larger than the... That's not effective, bottom line. I have to believe it's not effective.
So I just thought maybe with your wisdom, you would be able to enlighten us about that and make sure that we get an As this time.
I did my best.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for Mike? We've gone right down the road, so Mark would be here to...
I really am.
Okay. All right. JBS, I don't have anything to really report from the JBS. I did not attend the board meeting last week. I was out of town, so I don't have any, anything to report. If you have any questions, I will certainly get me answered for you or answer for you right now, but right now I don't have anything to report because I wasn't with that. Is there any other reports that we need to, committee reports that we need to talk about or go into?
I will mention that within the next several weeks, we will be meeting with our HEOLA representative. So once we meet with our HEOLA representative to look at those updated policies, we will be emailing those recommendations as far as updated and revised policies to our policy committee.
Okay. I do have another question, not question, another comment, not to you, Mike, just in general. I received three phone calls and I, actually, I think, Miss Joe was still here, about the Did you get any?
No.
Okay. They took the volleyball pictures, individual and team pictures, whenever they took them, the first week of school, before school started. They came a week ago, 10 days ago, and some people had the wrong pictures, the wrong students were on the, in the picture, not in the pictures, but the wrong parents got them, some of them weren't in the, all the pictures. It was a big fiasco, okay? And I, all I said was, we'd have to talk to the organization that took those photos, you know, that it wasn't, I'm sure it's part of the large contract. I assume that, I don't know that for a fact. I don't know if we use the same touchstone people that we use to take those pictures or not. But there are some upset parents out there because they were told that it would take another three to four weeks to correct this problem. So now I don't know where it all stands, but I'm just letting you know that there's some rumblings out there.
And this was specifically...
Volleyball.
Volleyball. None of it, because I'm assuming these were pictures that were probably taken, again, just the assumption, in mid-August for all of our fall sports.
Mid-August or right when school started, yeah.
Football, the cross-country.
And I have not heard, but I did hear from three...
Volleyball.
Volleyball, yes. That they, their daughter's picture, the one got the other daughter's picture, the other one didn't have any pictures anywhere. So when they called, the person said, well, can you describe the girl? And finally, they said, well, I can tell you the number she has on, which was the biggest help to them, okay? So it was number whatever. And she said, okay, well, I found those pictures, but it'll take me two, three weeks to get you those pictures. So I don't know where it ever ended. I told them that I would pass that information along.
I'll follow up.
And I said, you know, if there's anything that can be said or done, or whatever, because they were a little distraught by that. I received another phone call. I don't know why I'm receiving phone calls, but I go a year without receiving the phone calls, but that's the joy of being president. I received another phone call, and this has nothing to do, again, with academics, is that the concession stand line is entirely unacceptable, that you wait in line for a hot dog for 20 to 25 minutes at the ballgame, from that perspective. So I, just passing it along, that's, I've heard that from two different sets of parents, that the concession stand line does not move, that the people that are running it are not near as efficient as they have been in previous years because I guess they bought a new hot dog cooker. And it takes 20 to 25 minutes to cook the hot dogs or before the hot dogs were steamed. So there's an issue with the lines and that the visiting concession stand is never open. Now, is it not open because it's not sanitary? Is it not open because there's not enough people to work it? Or is it for some reason it's not open, but they sell certain things, but they don't sell hot dogs, they don't sell this, they don't sell that, they just put a table outside of that? Said, I don't know the reason for any of that, but I will bring that to the attention of administration, okay?
Jesus, going to be a busy man.
Well, that, the concession stand is really...
Run by the choir.
Choir boosters, that's correct. Choir boosters. So I know there's been some changes there, so you just might want to make sure you have some conversation with your director about that because I don't know who's doing any of that stuff. And if I'm hearing it from choir people, you know other people are going to be hearing it from choir people. Not from choir people, but from attendees about the choir stuff, so.
And I assume this was from the first two home football games?
It was specifically from the first one.
The first one, okay.
Because the other one was not, I mean, it was open, but a lot of people sat in their cars until the final decision was made. So the first one, yes.
That's right, that's right, because we had the weather for the second one. Okay, well, we'll definitely follow up on this because I mentioned earlier, we anticipate if we have nice weather...
This weekend, you could be...
With a big crowd.
You'll have a huge crowd, you know, with two teams that are 4-0. And from working them eight, nine years ago, I know what the lines were like when the football team wasn't 4-0, it was probably 0-4 during that time frame. So I just know that it will be, you know, it'll be an issue.
That's special.
Okay?
I have something.
Oh, you have one?
No, we're talking about like other committees. So I, I'm just, I was asking about, I don't remember, did we ever vote on anything about the whole logo thing? Did we ever come up with the rules and all that stuff? Like for people to use it? We did?
Yes, we passed that in May.
So businesses that want to use it now...
Once we have a licensing, a business that comes to us and wants to enter into a licensing agreement...
Yes.
We would then bring that before the board for consideration of future meetings.
So if businesses want to be in agreement, they need to contact the board of that?
Well, they should contact me and we'll put the agreement together and then bring it to a, to a...
Okay.
We did that in May.
Okay, I just want to remember. Okay.
Any other items that we need to just bring up? If not, we would go to the personnel recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. Actually, I know the board's had an opportunity to review and look through the agenda. And as I, as I go through here, I don't see anything that's really unusual or out of the ordinary... as I go through here, I don't see anything that's really unusual or out of the ordinary. And at this point would recommend approval of items 11A through 11N.
You have a motion in a second, please? Any comments or discussion on 11A through N? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yaccarozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yaccarozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Educational recommendations, item 12.
Just one item here, and actually, Mr. Teller, I think this was part of his presentation, if I remember correctly, in agreement with La Cada. And this is in agreement, I think, that we've had in place with them maybe three or four years, providing some services and support to our students specifically here at the high school. Would recommend approval of item 12A.
So move.
We have a motion in a second for item 12A. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yaccarozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Business recommendations?
Yes, thank you. Just three items here and again, I believe these items are self-explanatory. I did want to mention too, that item C, we really want to commend, I know Amy has been working closely with Kathy Gale in transportation and it's always nice when school districts can help one another with transportation needs and so forth, transporting special needs students or alternative school students or JVS, whatever the case may be, sometimes it's more efficient for everybody, for another school district to help with those things. So again, wanted to, you know, thank Amy and Kathy for their work with that. And at this time I recommend approval of items 13A through 13C.
So move.
You have a motion, it's listed from 13A, B, C, D, I believe, correct? A through C. Is there any comments or questions on there? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yaccarozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Item 14 would be a motion to adjourn to executive session, executive session to discuss employment of a public employee and there will be no action.
Before we do that?
You have something you'd like to break?
Just an update, we have a fourth grade student who requires a double lung transplant. He's been in Cincinnati, spent a few months now, and part of the organization pays for grooming boards for families with kids with like 20 diseases. And the good news is that it finally happened and he had a double lung transplant, I want to say Thursday or Friday, and is doing very well so far. No name, India, he's doing very well. Secondly, when is our October board meeting, since we have a full board?
October 14th.
The 14th?
Yes.
That's a good thing. Okay. No, it's good, I'll be leaving two days later, so. Okay? Yep, that's it. And October 14th is Columbus Day, right? We have school that day?
Yes.
Yes, we do, yes.
Right. So now...
I'm going to make that motion.
To go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee, but no action. I have this motion.
I thought Mark just drew it.
What happened here, Treasure? Did somebody already do it?
Mrs. Zappa made a motion. Mrs. Gillis, second amendment.
All right. There's too much...
We're too tense, right?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yaccarozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
So glad you came tonight, thank you.